For Rastini Mathaji to join. Meanwhile, devotees, if any of you have challenges with the sadhana report, please do let me know. And by the way, we have removed that the Amudan R P, the last option, devotees for a reason because that is more auspicious when we do it in the Kartik Masa. But nevertheless, you can continue to do it, but then move it from the sadhana report, that's all. Able to see it, Mathaji.
Hey Krishna devotees, sorry for that technical glitch. So today we thought, I thought we'll discuss the appearance of Krishna. There is a reason why I put it as appearance instead of birth. Once we go through the session, you'll understand what is Krishna's appearance or birth. Whether it was appearance or it was really his birth. So let's get started and it is very transcendental. It's very transcendental to know anything about Krishna, especially Krishna's appearance and disappearance. We do not wish as Vaishnavas, as practicing sadikas, we should know that he did not actually take birth because there is no birth for Krishna. Krishna is always existing. There is no starting or ending for Krishna, he is always there. Adipurusham we say, Govindam Adipurusham, that the reason behind that is because he does not take birth. So he is ajja, ajja means ja means birth, ajja means the opposite of birth, the one who is unborn. It says the one who is unborn, it is. So what happens is the background story, I'll give you a little bit of a background story. Mother earth is so tired, she is extremely tired of all the demonic activities which is going on on the planet. And she goes in the form of a cow and she cries in front of Lord Brahma. When she cries in front of Brahma, Brahma feels very bad for her. What is this? This is so much of demonic activity, I'm not able to do anything. So what he does is he will actually go to Vishnu. Vishnu is sleeping on Shiro the Kashi Vishnu, that is, he is sleeping on the ocean of milk. And she goes and Brahma along with Shiva and the Bhumi goes to that causal ocean and he, he is on the banks of the ocean and he will start praying to Vishnu. He actually says the Purusha Sukta, Purusha Sukta is actually narrated by the demigods. So he goes to the ocean of milk and he starts reciting that to Lord Vishnu. Lord Vishnu shows his Karuna and he gives a message, actually after that Lord Brahma meditates upon Vishnu. When he meditates upon Vishnu, what happens is Vishnu will enter his heart and give a message to his heart. In the Vedic culture, there was no talking before and there was not like communication, how information used to be transmitted, it used to be through the heart. So that is how Brahma received all the Vedas also, the four Vedas also, he received through the heart. That is Vishnu actually came to his heart and he, he got that information from the heart. The same way Vishnu will come in the, inside the heart of Brahma and he will give him the decision saying that I am going to enter the planet earth with, with all of my participants, that means my, all my paraphernalia or my associates, I will appear in earth. Lord Vishnu will give a message. And that message Lord Brahma will broadcast it to all the demigods, he broadcasts it to all the demigods. And he says all the demigods also have to take birth in Yedu dynasty. That is where Krishna is going to appear, he will say. So with that, after that, Brahma will go back to his Brahmaloka. He is the Prajapati of one, one Brahanda, one Brahanda, he is the father. So the maintenance of that, any problem, he is the one who does that. Why did he go to Lord Vishnu for it? Because in Varaha Avatara, Lord Vishnu or Krishna came in the form of a boar and he protected the earth. So again, earth is in trouble, so they go and ask Vishnu to help them. And that is the reason, the first reason why Krishna appears on earth to take care of all the miscreants in the earth, all the bad things which is happening, he wants to stop it. And that's why he, he comes to earth. So the other side, he has to take birth, there has to be a situation, that's a pastime. So he has to have a situation to take birth, right? So here what happens is Kamsa is the son of Ugrasen. Ugrasen and Devaka are brothers, okay? Devaka's daughter is Devaki, Devaki gets married to Vasudev. So when they get married and she goes, she's, after marriage, she is going to her husband's place. It is a custom in the Vedic culture that the brother or the brother-in-law, the brother of the bridegroom bride or the brother-in-law of the bridegroom will drop them till the house of the bridegroom and come back. The reason is she is separated from her family, she will feel that separation. So the brother will make sure that somebody from her father's side is there till she reaches the home. So that's how he is taking them on a chariot to their place, Mathura. On the way, what happens is there is an Ashiriravani. What is this Ashiriravani? It will say, hey, you are a fool Kamsa. You are taking care, you and you're taking your brother-in-law and your sister to their house. You don't know the reality, the reality is that the eighth son of Devaki is going to kill you one day. As soon as he hears that, he cannot take it, he is first of all a demonic kind of a person, he cannot take it. So what he will do, he will pull his sister by the hair and he will try to kill her there itself. So Acharyas actually give background as to why that Ashiriravani came. So what happens here is Kamsa will take care of Devaki and Vasudev so well, he takes care of them very well. It's Vaishnavasava, he is doing Vaishnavasava because Vasudev Maharaj is a very, very, very elevated devotee of Krishna and Devaki also. They are elevated people in spirituality, in faith in Krishna. They are practitioners and they are very true devotees. So when Kamsa does such seva, all his papa and anathas will go off. And Indra doesn't like that, Indra doesn't like that because this person is demonic and he has to be killed by Krishna. He doesn't want Krishna to show his mercy and forgive him because he is doing Vaishnavasava. So he will send Ashiriravani to provoke Kamsa again so that his true color comes out. And that is why the Ashiriravani comes and it tells Kamsa that you are a fool, this is what is going to happen. So immediately he will react, Kamsa will react immediately and pull her by the hair and he is ready to kill her. And that time Vasudev Maharaj, this is very profound, it is very big, it is a saramsh of entire Bhagavad Gita. Vasudev will try to preach Kamsa here. So he says, I'll give very, very high level because it is too detailed, this is very, very detailed. So what he says is, why are you scared? You are such a powerful king and why are you scared of death? The day we were born, death came along with that. So all of us have an expiry date, right? All of us come with that date, we, we are not born immortal. So every day we are growing closer to the death. So every day as we grow older, we are growing older, I mean closer to death also. Death and birth is going hand in hand. Every moment, every day we are dying, you know, that is a concept of death. And death is not complete annihilation of your entire identity, it is just the depth of the body. So why are you so worried? He will try to tell him. And then he says, see, he will start talking about how the birth happens. When that living entity mixes with the material and all the senses and that's how we get this body. And what all karmas we do, that will guide the demigods and Krishna to give us a body. He will give him all the saran and he will say, it is like a reflection, you know, whatever if we are doing is like a reflection. In the reflection, if you see a moon and the water moves far away, the moon also you will feel as if the moon is moving. But that is not true. So we have identified ourselves with the body and that's why we are feeling so strong desire. But it is like an image, it is not real, don't think of whatever we are going through, the suffering or joy we are going through is real. It is not real, it is a mistaken identity, he will try to preach him. He will also tell him that, now he will also tell him, hey, this body, it's, it's you are thinking it is alive, but it is not, your atma is only alive. It is as if you are dreaming, you know, in the dream, you are climbing a hill or you are, you know, in the water, that's how it is. So don't believe that, it is a maye, the more strong you believe, the more strong the maye will. He will give him all that, so you can understand Vasudev Maharaj's spiritual knowledge. It is, he is very profound knowledge he has, okay? He is very, very elevated soul he is. So he'll say, all this he will say, but Kamsa will not hear him. Kamsa just wants to make sure that he kills Devaki. So without any options, what Kamsa, Vasudev Maharaj does is somehow or the other, I have to get out of this situation, this is a very dangerous situation. He is holding a sword to his sister, so anything he speaks, his sister will die, Devaki will die. So he will think, in life also, sometimes all such situations come. You can try to avoid it, how much ever careful you are, you will be tested in time because of our karmas, we will be tested. So my immediate thing is I have to get out of this situation. And later I can think of saving my children, but currently I have to save Devaki. So he will tell Kamsa, Kamsa, look, see, we don't know whether a son will be born, who will kill you, what if it is only daughters? So in the future, what we have, we don't know all that. So why are you thinking like this? Just let Devaki live for now. If there is a son born, I will bring and present my son to you. I will assure you, I will do that, he will promise him. And because Vasudev Maharaj is a man of honor, this Kamsa will agree, he believes him and he agrees him. But still he will put them in a prison. And in the prison, they are treated like animals, their hands are cuffed, their legs are cuffed and they can only walk certain distance, very small distance they can walk, they cannot walk far off and all those things. He has put them in a prison. In fact, Kamsa has put his own father Ugrasena also in the prison. He is from the Boja dynasty, he takes over the Boja dynasty. And also, he will threaten all the demigods also. He has already threatened all the demigods, all the demigods like Varuna, Indra and all are chefs in his kitchen, they are cutting vegetables. He is controlling the entire three worlds he is controlling at this point. So even the demigods needed a release from Kamsa. When Krishna takes Sabbath, comes, appears, even demigods are under his control, it has become like that. So to add salt to Kamsa, Kamsa is provoked now to add salt to that. Narada Munni reminds him of what had happened in the last janma office. He would be some Kalindra or something, a name of a demon, it is a very bad demon he will be, Kamsa will be. Lord Vishnu would have killed him in the previous janma. So he knows in this janma Krishna in the Yedu dynasty is his enemy. Whoever is born in Yedu dynasty is his enemy, he knows that. And he is waiting to kill as a revenge the Yedu dynasty leader because he knows that last janma Vishnu killed him, that revenge he wants to take in this janma. So Narada reminds him that and he provokes him even more. So that you know, he is in that state where Krishna can come and take care of him. So in both the ways, they are kind of provoking him because he is a very bad person, he is he is taken control of the entire three worlds and they need a release from his grip at this point, okay? Then what happens, Devaki and Vasudev give birth to six children and those six children Kamsa comes every time to the jail and he throws them to a ball and they die. All the six children have died. Now the seventh child comes, so the six children who have taken birth, they say it is the sixth anartas in our life. Lust, anger, greed, envy, pride, that is the six janmas which has happened, okay? And the seventh child is Balaram. Now Devaki knows that, who is Balaram? Balaram is also a close associate of Krishna. He is a potency of Krishna only it is. There is not much difference with Balaram and Krishna, they say, okay? So she knows that God is in her womb at this point. But at the same, she is very happy, at the same time she is feeling very sad also because Kamsa is going to do something to this child also. So what happens is Yogamaya comes. Yogamaya with her power, she will move the womb from Devaki Mata's womb to Rohini's womb. Now Rohini is another wife of Vasudev, who is in Mathura with Nandam Maharaj. As soon as Vasudev Maharaj marries Devaki and they are brought to prison, he made sure that Rohini is safeguarded in Nandam Maharaj's house. So now Rohini is in Nandam Maharaj's house and that womb, that Balaram is actually moved into Rohini Mataji's womb, okay? So it's moved into Rohini Mataji's womb and he takes birth there. And why did Balaram get into Devaki Mataji's womb? Because the six anartas which are born in Devaki's Mataji's womb have, you know, dirty that womb for Krishna to come. So to clean that womb, Balaram actually takes birth. Balaram appears in the womb as a cleansing or sanitizing of so before we keep Krishna, install Krishna or God in our house also, we clean that place. The same way Balaram is trying to clean the place so that Krishna can appear, so that is the background. Now Krishna, now seventh child is Balaram. Seventh child is Balaram and then he is actually, by Yogamaya, he is moved into the Rohini Mataji's womb and he will take birth in Mathura. So the eighth child, the eighth child is actually Krishna. Krishna won't be born immediately in Devaki Mataji's womb. He will appear as a four-armed Vishnu in front of, in the jail of where Devaki and Vasudha are there, Vasudev Maharaj are there. So he will appear as a four-armed Vishnu and then he will tell them saying that, hey, look, I am going to take birth and what you have to do, then Devaki will say, no, no, don't do that because you know Kamsa will do something to you also, you, I don't want to, they are so happy to see Vishnu. And there is a background why Devaki and Vasudev only gave birth to Krishna. Vasudev and Devaki are greatest devotees of Krishna in the last three janmas. In the last three janmas, they are Sutappa and Rishni. So they have done lot of austerities, husband and wife would have done lot of austerities for three janmas and Krishna will, Vishnu or Krishna will appear and he will ask, what do you want? They will say, we want a son like you. So when he says, I want a son like you, Krishna will say, there is nobody like me. So I have to only take birth in the third janma, he will actually give them the benediction of being born to them. So he will appear and Devaki will say, don't, don't come here because Kamsa is going to do something. She in Vatsalya Pram, she will say that. So Vishnu will say, no, I have to come Maya, I have to release you and rest of the world, I have to come, don't worry, nothing will happen to me. I won't stay in the prison, I will go off to Mathura as soon as I am born. I mean Goloka as soon as I am born, not Mathura, sorry, Goloka as soon as I am born, he'll say. So he, when he says that, she says, okay. And then he will tell Vasudev Maharaj, he will give instructor to Vasudev Maharaj. As soon as I am born, take me to Goloka and exchange the baby. There in Goloka, there is another baby girl being born and you have to exchange that baby girl with me, he'd say. And Vasudev also agrees, immediately that Vishnu Rupa will become a baby. It will become a baby in front of Vasudev. So Vasudev will carry the baby. Prabhu, Anil Prabhu, there is an emergency, just give me two minutes, okay?
Sure, sure, Mathaji, yeah, please go ahead, Mathaji.
Sorry devotees, I have an emergency.
Well, Mathaji is back, I just want to add one point. So along with Krishna, in fact, all of his other the, the people who lived with Krishna back then in Yeduvamsha, so all of them are actually incarnation. So they came along with Krishna, they lived there. And yeah, that's, that is how Krishna takes birth along with his devotees, yep, you're back, Mathaji, I hope things are in control, Mathaji.
Yeah, my son is not well, they've taken him, so.
Okay, okay.
So, so what happens is they come, he, he instructs Vasudev Maharaj. Please can you carry the baby to, carry me to Mathura, he says. And Vasudev Maharaj agrees to do that, okay? So what happens is Vasudev Maharaj doesn't know how he is going to do that. Because he is inside a prison, in, inside a prison, it's very difficult, right? I mean, how will he, he, he has no help inside the prison. So that's why he is worried what will happen. As soon as he is worried, he carries Krishna, right? The minute he holds Krishna, the iron shackles will open up. The iron shackles in his leg and arm will open up. So what does that signify? So this entire story of Krishna appearing is a big story and a big takeaway for us. There is a lot of takeaways for us. So as soon as that opens, it's as good as when you have Krishna on your tongue, the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. We get rid of the rebirth and the birth. The shackles resemble the rebirth and birth in this planet. So that is what it resembles. So that opens up, it opens up and he is free now. Then, there are sixteen gates. In the prison, there are sixteen gates he has to cross over. That sixteen gates resemble the five senses we have and the five working senses, the five senses we have is seeing, nose to smell, taste, hearing, touch. That is sensory, sensory, once five senses we have. Then we have other five senses which is the working senses. That means what does karma, what karma we do, with our hands we do karma, with our legs we do karma, with our mouth we speak, we do karma. Hearing, we, here, watching something, we are doing karma. So like that, five karmas, karmendrias we have. Okay, and then one is our buddhi or mind, mind, that is mind. Then intelligence, ego and this one. So there are sixteen gates which resemble the sixteen sensory organs and the working organs, the mind and the intelligence, ego and the mind. So all this totally, it will be sixteen, so that resembles the sixteen gates which is resembling Kamsa's prison. Okay, and Kamsa is none other than the maya, we say, he is the maya. So when the door, the doorkeepers, so first there is a door, then there are two doorkeepers and there are lions also outside guarding that. And there is a big stone on the top. Whoever comes out either will get killed by the lion or that stone will fall, it will be such a situation. So first thing, the shackles when they open, it is resembling the birth and rebirth for us. And each gate it opens, that is one-one sense organ which is getting purified and opening for us, okay? And then the doorkeepers of Kamsa, the doorkeepers are Kamsa are like the sixth anartas in our life. That is the lust, greed, all that, all that will go away, that means they fall asleep. As soon as you have Krishna name on the, on the tongue, the first thing which will happen is birth and rebirth will go away. Then all our anartas in our heart, the dirt in our heart will sleep forever. It will not get up, by the maya, it will just sleep. Kamsa is the maya, Kamsa's soldiers are the anartas in our lives, so they all sleep. Then the doors open, the door opening resembles the door of Goloka opening for us. Okay, so that is how the story goes. It's, you think it is just a pastime, but there is a lot of takeaway for us in this. Because the state, this pastime was done for us to go deeper in that what it is and that is how we have to take it. It can be said, read as a story, but there are deeper understandings for us. And then, whatever Vasudev Maharaj is carrying, right? That is Krishna, that is transcendental knowledge. Once we get into that transcendental knowledge, all our, he, he feels very happy. Although he is in a prison house, he will feel very happy. Why does he feel happy? Because he is holding Krishna. So what does that resemble? Although we are in a lot of trouble in our life, lot of things going on in our life. Internally, you will feel that happiness once you are in Krishna consciousness. I wouldn't say Krishna consciousness, once you are in the realization or in the path of self-realization. When you have even little bit of bhakti for Krishna, that happiness and transcendental bliss will start showing up. And here Vasudev Maharaj is like a vehicle. He is a vehicle who is carrying Krishna across the, if he comes outside, there is a river, he has to cross across the river. He is carrying Krishna, right? So all of our body is also like Vasudev Maharaj, a vehicle. And we have to use this vehicle to actually get off this birth and rebirth. We have to cross the ocean of birth and rebirth using this vehicle like Vasudev Maharaj is using his own body. Okay, all the organs in our body, all the senses in our body should meditate upon Krishna, should think about Krishna. Like the eyes should see Krishna all the time, the nose should smell the tulsi from the lotus feet of Krishna. The mouth should taste the prasadam and chant, chant also. Hearing, we have to hear more of Krishna kata. And then hands, we have to service, serve the lord. Legs, we have to do parikramas or go to the temple to serve the lord. So when we start using all our senses to serve the lord, our body is a vehicle and Krishna is within us, we are carrying Krishna, that bliss will come out and it will help us cross the Yamuna like how Maharaja Vasudev crossed the river. We will be able to cross the river or our life and death and rebirth, all that ocean. Ocean of birth and rebirth, we will be able to cross. So that is the meaning here of why they've shown that, why it is Vasudev Maharaj is carrying the baby and coming out, okay? So what happens when Krishna comes out, okay? Krishna, when he comes out, it is like the sun rising. Okay, why it is exactly like the sun rising, they give the example, okay? Vasudev Maharaj is very quiet when he comes out, all the gates are opened, he comes out of that prison house, he is outside now. When he is out, it is very quiet. You know why it is very quiet? Because if he makes any sound, somebody may see him. So he, he tries to be very slow, very quiet, trying to escape from that prison. So the sun rising is also like that. Anytime the day when the sun is rising in the morning, there is no sound. He quietly comes up on the horizon. So that is why, that is the first reason why Krishna coming out is equal to the sun. The second reason why it is equal to the sun is the ignorance. So the darkness in the night sky, right? It is same as the ignorance in our hearts, it is the same ignorance that humanity has. So when Krishna comes in our life, that ignorance is taken away. And it is a bright light, it is a transcendental bliss, we understand who we are, why we are born, where we have to go. So that is the second reason why it is Krishna is same as sun rising. The third reason, Krishna immediately, the sun rising, right? It is dark, suddenly it won't be like, as if you are switching on the light, it won't become bright. It will little daybreak, little five percent light will come, ten percent light will come, fifteen percent light will come, twenty percent light will come, like that, only the sun rises, slowly the sun will come on the horizon. Same way is bhakti. We can't jump directly to the Goswami level, we can't go there. Slowly bhakti will rise in our hearts, that is the reason. So now Maharaja Vasudev is actually outside. He is come outside, but he, how will he go? Because there are, he has to cross a river and then there is a village kind of a thing also, what if somebody from the village What if somebody from the village sees him? It is very difficult. So Indra will help at that time. Indra, he will start a big rain. So that people who are on the street go to the home, people are at home, they don't come out. And they cannot see properly who is carrying the baby, they cannot see that. So Indra will help in that way. Also, the drops of water which are falling on the rooftops, right? The rooftop, whatever drops are falling, that will help the footsteps of Maharaja Vasudev. So when he puts the foot on a dry ground, if he puts it, or even wet ground, if he, that clattering sound will come. To avoid that sound, when the rain falls heavily on that top of a house, rooftop, it will collide with that sound and he is able to walk. Now he comes to the river and he doesn't know how to cross because the baby is there, how can he cross? Yamuna will leave way to him to cross the river, okay? So he will try to cross the river. And then the Sheshashayana, the thousand-headed snake will come and cover him on the top. It will cover him on the top in such a way that the baby should not get wet. And also it doesn't cover from the side or from the front, it'll cover from the back. There, there is a significance for that also. Vasudev Maharaj is a great devotee, a great devotee is serving the Lord. So Balaram or the Sheshashayana, the snake is teaching us a lesson that it will cover both Vasudev Maharaj and Krishna, saying that when we serve pure devotees, Krishna is more happy with that. He will be more happy, that's why we have to take, we have to serve the Vaishnavas, we have to take spiritual guru. We have to surrender unto them, that is the reason. So when the snake is covering, it is covering both Vasudev Maharaj and Krishna so that they can cross the river easily. Okay, and then they cross the river, when they cross the river, he slowly, very slowly he will go. He will slowly go, he will take that girl baby and he will put Krishna there and he will come away. And he is very quick in doing that also. Why is he very quick in doing that? Because the girl baby, if it cries, right? Everybody will be awake again and they will know who, who is here via their exchanging the baby. So he is very quick on picking the baby. Again, he comes again, Yamuna will leave the way for them and then they cross over. And as soon as he starts entering each gate, the doors start closing. Now, who is ma, whom is he carrying? The girl baby, right? Who is that? It's actually Maya. Maya means Durga Devi actually. So that Maya, see, see the contrast, when Krishna was in the hand, the doors opened and the shackles came off. When he is carrying Maya, all the doors are closing. That means all the senses that we are using, it will affect us when we come in contact with Maya. When we come in contact with material earth, same thing will happen. Our senses will start reacting with all the anartas. We want to do sense gratification. Why? Because we are in, coming in contact with Maya. The same way, even though Vasudev Maharaj was a pure devotee, when he carried momentarily the Maya shakti, which is the baby of Nanda Maharaj and Shodha Maya. When he touched that, the doors started closing as he entered and the shackles will come and hold him in the hand. So that whenever we are in touch with Maya, the same thing happens to us also. That's why the store, this is, although it's a pastime, it has lot of meanings that we have to take. As long as Krishnanam is in our tongue, as long as we are doing bhakti, the anartas will slowly sleep away and our birth and rebirth will go off. The doors will open, that means all our senses will start getting purified. The harinam will start purifying our, that, one-one senses also, it will start puring. We have to engage our senses in the Krishna service, so it will clear off. And also, we, even though in the heart we are carrying Krishna, we are not seeing the transcendental bliss. All of us have the transcendental bliss. Once all this is put to sleep, then Krishna will start showing, showing his own way. Like the rising of the sun, we will be able to see Krishna. And also, when Vasudev Maharaj carries Krishna to take him out of the prison, what Yogamaya does is Yogamaya will put everybody to sleep in Goloka. Why Yogamaya comes there? Yogamaya is transcendental and Maya is what we are all under her control. And Maya will put everybody from Kamsa's side to sleep, okay? So there are two things, it's the same shakti, but it acts differently on devotees and it acts differently on demonic people or the badhijivas or the conditioned souls like us. So the Maya will put to sleep in Kamsa's district, everybody. Because they're all demoniac and badhijivas, it will put them to proper sleep. And Yogamaya will put everybody in Goloka in transcendental sleep. When you are in transcendental sleep, you are still meditating on Krishna, you are not in ignorance. But in Kamsa's, everybody will be in ignorance, everybody will actually go to the ignorance and sleep there. That is the difference. And then what happens is Kamsa comes to know in the morning, everything will be as normal. Whatever gates were opened, everything will close, the guards will get up after some time. So everybody is just close their eyes, as soon as they wake up, they, they don't know what happened. It's as if it was just one second that they all were put to sleep and they came off. And then Kamsa comes, Kamsa comes and he picks up the child and he is astonished that it is a girl child. The minute he picks up the child, right? It will kick him in the head here with the leg, it will kick him in the head and he will say, it will escape his arm. And it will show the different arms of Durga Devi and it will say, hey, the person who has to kill you is already born and I am his energy, Krishna's energy I am. You cannot do anything to him, he is the most powerful person, it says, and it will just go away. The essence here is, when it kicks Kamsa here, right, on the head, that means Durga, the energy of Krishna already kicked Kamsa even before Kamsa could really kick it. So the power is so powerful that it already kicked him even before he could, Krishna could actually finish Kamsa. And there in Amathura, I mean in Goloka, what happens? Mother Yashoda is so happy with the child because she also in, was in yoga nidra. She didn't know what kind of a baby it is, if the baby was right next to her, she, the one that she gave birth to. She didn't know what happened, she just got up and saw Krishna and she was extremely happy that you know, it is Krishna is born and she is actually enjoying and she is bathing the child, she's taking care of the child. But Vasudev Maharaj and Devaki, they both know that it is their baby. It is Krishna is their baby. And Balaram is also growing up with Krishna itself in Goloka. They, they are actually enjoying in Goloka while Kamsa is still searching for, or where is Krishna? He is so angry that you know, the girl baby also went out of his hand, what can he do? He's very disappointed, he is extremely disappointed. Then actually there are many reasons why Krishna is born. Or he's not born, he's aja, right? Because he's unborn. So Kunti Devi in her prayers will tell different reasons why Krishna was born, okay? So the first reason she gives is to glorify the devotees. So as I told you in the previous thing, it said, when Krishna tries to do a lela, when he tries to do a pastime, there are multiple facets he includes. He does not include just one thing, he actually includes many facets or many angles he will cover because he is very diligent and many devotees will be touched by it. Many people's desires will be fulfilled. Here, what happens is to glorify his great devotees. He wanted to make sure that Devaki and Vasudev, actually their benediction was pending for three years. So he will make sure that he takes care of that vara that he gave, that he will be born to them. And they were, although it was in the prison house, they got their benediction fulfilled, okay? The second reason why he was born is, he was born in the Yedu dynasty because Yedu Maharaj is a great devotee of Krishna. And he always wished for Krishna to be born in the dynasty. It's like this, that the Chandan tree, right? It can grow anywhere, it can grow in our house, it can grow in somebody else's house, it can grow anywhere. But if you see it, it is most prominent in the Malay forest, it seems. It, it, it is, it is most prominent, nobody goes and plants it, it automatically comes in Malay forest. The same way Krishna could have been born in anybody's house, but he took birth in Yedu dynasty only because that Yedu Maharaj had a wish in his heart that there Krishna should be born in that dynasty. And the third reason is that Vasudev and Devaki had begged Krishna for a son exactly like Krishna. They were, did lot of tapasya, many, many janmas they did tapasya to get Krishna. Just a son like Krishna, but Krishna said, there's none other than me who is like me. So I have to be only born to you, so he will be born to Vasudev and Devaki. And also to protect and prosper, with the prosperity and the wealth of demi-gods would have gone down. Because Kamsa has taken control, he is in control of all the demi-gods, all the three worlds he is in control. To release them from the Kamsa's clutches, Krishna is appearing to help the demi-gods. Always when there is trouble with the demi-gods and the demons, Krishna will take avatar and he will come. Here it is not avatar, he is complete potency or only will come, his entire potency is only coming down, okay? And then unhealate the demons, while he is appearing, he will take care of all the demons also. Kamsa is the biggest demon at that time, he will take care. In fact, when Kamsa tries to kill Devaki, right? When he tries to kill Devaki, all the other demons who are his friends will also come and tell him, don't kill, not, not kill Devaki, killing the children, it is very bad what you are doing, don't kill those children. They will also suggest to him, he will not listen to anybody. He is in the full speed to kill all the babies, make sure that he doesn't have any enemies and he wants to kill Krishna. Although the other demons, little bit of sense they had, they advised him, he never listened to anybody. So Kamsa was the biggest demon and he was very, very, very powerful. Indra, Chandra, Varuna and all used to shiver in front of him, it seems. That Indra is very powerful, if you don't know that Indra is very, very powerful. So Kamsa is more powerful than them, okay? So to take care of that Krishna only had to appear. And Bhumi couldn't take any longer, it was very, getting heavy. She was under a lot of stress, under a lot of burden that you know, earth, she couldn't do anything. It was going to very bad condition it had become, so that is why Krishna appears. And then mortals like us, like the way we are discussing today, the Harikatha. The minute we discuss about Krishna, we are all thinking in the mind of Krishna. For us all, if there was no lelas, then we, we can't think about Krishna, just the harinam, that taste will not come for us. So for us to meditate upon his name, to meditate upon Krishna, to talk about him, to discuss about him in classes like this. And all this will lead to what? We will become half an inch or one inch closer to Krishna, that's why this lela happened. And our lives are also like the prison, our current lives are also like the prison, the takeaway from the classes. Our lives is also like the prison house. And in that prison house, we are all stuck with these anartas, we closed up the gates. We have made ourselves the prisoners with those shackles of birth and rebirth. With every desire, we are moving from one prison cell to another prison cell, that's all. Every birth that we take, we are moving from one prison cell to another prison cell and then we are continuing to live there. And what will happen if we go to the demi-gods and ask them, pray to them, right? Oh, I want this, I want a child, can you give me a child? Oh, I want a better job, oh, I want to do this, I want to do that. It is like getting, it's a very, it's very crude example, but I'll still give it. It is like getting a soap or a towel for the prisoners, extra soap is a big thing, right? Inside prison because they don't get, even the basic necessities they don't get. So when we go to demi-gods and pray to them, it's as if we are expecting them to give us extra little bit of one bottled water, can you give it to me? Extra apple, can you give it to me? Extra soap, can you give it to me? Our Krishna is saying, hey, we have Goloka, come there. We are saying, no, 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 this prison is very nice. If I get a nice place where it is a little bit clean, ah, that is like America. Going to America is a prison house, little bit clean area is there, I want to go and sleep there. Where the, it is a little bit cleaner, it looks a little bit whiter, that's all is the difference. So we go to the demi-god, so get us a job in America, get us a visa for America, we want to go. That is our life, we have to all think in that way, we should start thinking. And here, as Vasudev Maharaj and Devaki prayed honestly to Krishna, in their heart, they welcomed Krishna. And they said, Kamsa is giving us lot of trouble. So when we have lot of trouble in our life, we have to sitting in that prison house, sitting in this body, we have to pray to Krishna, Krishna come and take us out of the struggle. He will come. Imagine if Krishna can come to the real prison to take Devaki and Vasudev Maharaj out of that place and he can be born or he can appear, why won't he appear for us? He loves all of us and he wants to show us the better life, but we don't want to take it. We are like, yeah, a little bit of TV, if you can give TV, we go to, we go to Krishna or I mean, we go to Ganapati and say, or take off all the obstacles in my life, I want one extra TV in my cell today. And we will get it, they will give it to us, but there's no use. How long will we continue to be in this prison house? We have to try and get out of this prison house. That is the essence of the Harikatha or the Krishna lela, why Krishna was appeared. And also we have to understand, being in Krishna consciousness and sadakas, we should understand Krishna was never born like us, he is not a mortal person like us. He appeared and he disappeared. Like in the class I was saying, he will come into our vision of sight and he will go away, like that, he appeared and he goes away. So when we talk about Krishna, he may look like an ordinary person, but he is not an ordinary person. And how will he come? This prison house is equal to my life on earth. I am a prisoner in this body and this body has that sixteen gates. All that sixteen gates I have to put it to rest. Only when I put it to rest, it, the prison house will open and this atma can go out and go to Goloka. How will this atma go to Goloka? Once I engage my, all my senses in Krishna seva and I continuously chant harinam. The shackles will open as soon as I chant harinam. Whether you are doing service or not doing service, once you keep chanting in your mouth, that shackles will break. That means you will not take another birth. Even if you take, you will take birth in a devotee's house so that you can continue to open those gates. The first piece is done, that shackles is broken for you by harinam. Keep continuing to do that, even if you die in this birth, the next birth, the first gate will be open for you. That means your tongue is already chanting harinam in the next birth. So the first gate, you've already engaged one, so one gate is open. Like that only, every janma, the gates will keep opening. If you do intense bhakti, all the sixteen gates will be opened in one janma itself. And Krishna as a son will guide you, he will take out the ignorance, he will guide you. Balaram is the spiritual guru. When I said the Sheshashayana which comes on the top, right? It is the guru in your life. The spiritual guru is represented by Sheshashayana, Sheshashayana is none other than Balaram. Balaram, he is always trying to comfort the Lord, as the Sheshashayana, he becomes a bed. Every instance Krishna is thinking of something, Balaram becomes that, he executes that to comfort the Lord. So without Balaram's blessing, as a spiritual guru, we cannot cross this river. Without a guru, with this body which is like a boat, I cannot cross without the captain of the ship. And the captain of the ship is the guru, spiritual guru in our life. And that river which I'm crossing, the Yamuna, that is the ocean of birth and death. And when I go to Ashodha Mayi on the other side, that is Goloka where our Krishna lives eternally. That is the background of the story. The story is very nice, the lela is very easy to learn, you know, to get that. But how we take it in our life, what is the implementation for us, that is very important. And this is the takeaway for us, continue to chant, even if you are not able to engage in service, continue to chant. Because of that chanting, two things will happen, one, the shackles will break, the first gate is open for you. And Krishna will put that little bit of And Krishna will put that little bit of two guards who are standing outside the first gate to sleep. That means one anarta is gone for you. One anarta is closed, that mouth is clean, so that one anarta will go away for you. That is the essence of this. And slowly but surely, all the gates will open for all of us by two things. Here, hearing also, we are doing Harikata, we are hearing, so the second gate also may open continuously every day if you attend the class. Plus, if you turn on the videos, I will tell that also, you turn on the videos and sit, the second gate will be open for you guys, okay? So chanting, from tomorrow, I want to see more people raising their hands for chanting because all of us want our first gate to be opened. And then when we turn on the videos, our second gate will be open because we are more attentive to hear. If you don't hear, right, when you are sleeping, sometimes in Harikata you sleep, why do you sleep? Because Kamsa's guards are there and they are putting you to sleep. So you shouldn't let that to happen, the guards are waiting outside, no, you should not, you should not let them that. Ignorance is coming on us and that's why we are sleeping, Maya is coming and putting us to sleep, you shouldn't do that. So you should be very alert, to be very alert, you have to turn on the video, that time you know somebody is watching you. So that time you will, even though you turn, don't turn on the video, we are not watching you, Krishna is always watching you. But till we come to that consciousness, we have to keep our videos on. Okay, so that is the essence or the takeaway that our life is like a prison. Wherever we are sitting, whatever condition we are, whichever prison cell we are. All of us should start chanting and meditating upon that Krishna so that he can come in our life. Like he came for Deviki and Vasudev and free us from that uh prison house. And take us back where Yashodami, Radharani, Gopis, Braja, to that Brajapoomi, to that Goloka. We have to cross this ocean, the Yamuna we have to cross, we need spiritual guru, Shesha Shaina, we need him. We need him to support and protect us from the rain, protect us from anything in the ocean. There'll be lot of crocodiles, everything, he has to protect us from everything and he has to guide us which path we have to go. So that is the takeaway for all of this and this story does not end here. The story continues with Kamsa searching for Krishna. You will see in the next few chapters whether Anil Prabhu takes the class or Suranak Prabhu takes the class. We can start covering one-one Leelas, how Kamsa is continuously searching for Krishna. And he will start sending one demon after another demon. One after another, he'll start sending demons to kill Krishna. And how our beloved Krishna, although he is a butter thief playing around with the Gopas and Gopis and enjoying with Yashodami. His another sense knows who's coming to kill and impact the Braja. A harming Braja, so he will take care of those demons. And each of these demons has a background, it is not just demons, it is a lesson for us, how we are in our life. All the bad qualities we have is equivalent to one-one demon. Because I told you in the beginning, Kamsa is like the Maya and the Maya will keep sending one-one demons in our life also. Which we have to kill with the help of Krishna. Krishna, as soon as you keep Krishna in your heart, he will start, he knows what is coming in your way and he will kill. So next class, when we do, we'll try to do one-one, Kamsa, one-one uh demons that he sends. What they signify in our life, we will try to learn that. Hare Krishna. I think I ended it real quick, but I think I gave too much of points at a very short time, please excuse me. If you have any questions, further questions, I'm also learning this, each time I'm preparing for a class, I'm also learning a lot. So it's not that um I know and you don't know, all of us together are listening to the Harikata. It's not just listening as an entertainment Tahrickata, you should take it into your mind. And then take it into your heart when you implement it, when you meditate upon it, it goes to your intelligence. And then when you recollect it, it is going to your intelligence and then you'll know how to implement it. And that implementation is coming from the heart, so all three are getting purified and that is how we have to advance in spirituality. Hare Krishna dear devotees, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, Sinamachi, it uh, it was a very comprehensive one is what I would say. Uh so very methodical and in fact uh uh the analogy that what you gave us. The unlocking of the shackles and the guards won't be able to touch or do anything. And when that can happen, I think that you uh put uh well, Bataji, I think all of us could relate to it.
Let me know devotees, I may have confused some of you if you didn't know the story. Um for me, the story is just entertainment, I like to give the Tatwa behind it, that is more important for us to implement. It is not a movie where we just enjoy, that is good, transcendental enjoyment is good, but we forget very quickly. I don't want you guys to forget anything, so when I just say, hey, Krishna put everybody to sleep, it is very easy. But if I say, hey, Kamsa is the Maya, Maya puts us to sleep when we are hearing Krishnakatha. So that, those kind of things you should remember, whenever you are meditating about Krishna. Why I have to chant, why I have to meditate, I think it is very strong point, if you have Krishna on your tongue. The first thing, birth and rebirth is gone, that is such a beautiful thing and we don't want to move from one cell to another cell. We want to get out of that prison, we have to get out of that river, cross the river.